Hello and welcome to daily memory lab study session four. In today's study session, we will be doing round two of page number twelve point one six to twelve point one nine. Which we studied yesterday, round one. So we will do that round two. And then, once we finish that, we will go to the last six pages of, five to six pages of this chapter. Twelve point two zero till twelve point two six. Before we start, let us set the intention first. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I am most likely, I will make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace mistakes and I reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection. My goal is only to make a tiny bit of progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. With that intention set, let us go to round two of what we studied yesterday. Page number twelve point one six. Topic number ten, validity period of E-way bill or consolidated E-way bill rule one thirty eight sub rule ten. The validity of E-way bill depends on the distance to be traveled by the goods. For a distance of less than two hundred kilometers, the E-way bill will be valid for a day from the relevant date. For every two hundred kilometers thereafter, the e- the validity will be additional one day from the relevant date, okay? So you see the tabular column here. Now you have two hundred kilometers, distance within the country up to two hundred kilometers. Validity is one day in cases other than over dimensional cargo or multimodal shipment in which. At least one leg involves by transport or uh involves transport by ship. Okay, for every two hundred kilometers or part thereof thereafter. One additional day in cases other than over dimensional cargo or multimodal shipment. Okay, this is the part where we had a little bit of doubt. It was an over, it was an open loop since yesterday. And again, they have given what is this over dimensional cargo. I think we have to do a bit of research about it to understand what is over dimensional cargo, but let's just keep it as an open loop as of now. Okay, up to twenty kilometers, distance within country up to twenty kilometers, one day in case of over dimensional cargo, okay? So the first two situations are, the period other than over dimensional cargoes. In the last two situations are up to twenty kilometers, one day in case of over dimensional cargo or multimodal shipment. In which at least one leg involves transport by ship. For every twenty kilometer or part thereof, one additional day. So once we learn what is over dimensional cargo, this thing will be like even more concrete, okay? Relevant date, relevant date means the date on which the E-way bill has been generated. And the period of validity shall be counted from the time at which the E-way bill has been generated. And each day shall be counted as the period expiring at midnight of the day immediately following. The date of generation of E-way bill. Okay, so this can be explained by following examples. Suppose an E-way bill is generated at like twelve o'clock at midnight, twelve four A M. On fourteenth March, then the first day would end on twelve midnight of fifteenth and sixteenth March. Second day will end on twelve midnight of sixteen seventeen March and so on. So if I generate the E-way bill pretty early, very early, then I will have forty eight hours of validity because I will have. I will have midnight of the entire fourteen, the twelve hours, the twenty four hours will go and then I will still have one more day of uh validity. Uh right, suppose an E-way bill is generated at pretty late in the day, almost the day of fourteenth March is over like, let's say eleven thirty in the. Evening, then the validity kind of shrinks from forty eight hours till twenty five hours. Because in present day, I will have only maybe next thirty to forty minutes in today's day, then fifteenth March will come. Then from that time, for the till the end of fifteenth March, only the bill will be valid. So the E-way bill, it depends on at what time you generate. So let's say now what is the time, it is two P M. Now if I generate E-way bill, it will last till the midnight today's night. The count would not have started, but the one day validity counts from the end of midnight. So from now, it is another ten hours for midnight. After that, another twenty four hours, the will be, the bill will be valid. So that means if I generate an E-way bill now, it will be valid for the next thirty four hours. That's how I understand this. The validity of the E-way bill starts when first entry is made in part B. That is vehicle entry is made first time in case of road transportation. Or first transport document number entry in case of rail, air, ship transportation, whichever is the first entry. Okay, it may be noted that validity is not recalculated for subsequent entries in part B, okay? A consignor hands over his his goods for transportation on Friday to a transporter. However, the assigned transporter starts the movement of goods on Monday. The validity period of E-way bill starts only after the details in part B are updated by the transporter for the first time. So even if I have delivered my goods to the transporter on Friday, the E-way bill will not commence from Friday. Because the transporter begins to movement, move the goods only from Monday, therefore the E-way bill will begin from that day only. Because Monday only the transporter would have updated part B. So the validity counts right after the part B is filled, okay? In the given situation, consignor can fill the details in part A on Friday and hand over his goods to the transporter. When the transporter is ready to move the goods, he can fill part B, that is. The assigned transporter can fill the details in part B on Monday. And the validity period of the E-way bill will start from Monday, okay? A registered person has to transport goods from his its warehouse to its depot. Located at a distance of five hundred kilometer in a normal cargo. In the given case, if E-way bill is generated, it will be valid for three days. Yeah, we saw again this yesterday. For every two kilometer, one day validity will be there. Therefore, if it is five hundred kilometers. Uh there is two two hundred kilometers within that, so you get two days. And then the part thereof, which is the next part is hundred kilometers, so you get an extra day for that, so totally three days you will get validity. Okay, over dimensional cargo, the definition is given here. It means a cargo carried as a single indivisible unit and which exceeds the dimensional limit specified in rule number ninety three. Of Central Motor Vehicles Rules nineteen eighty nine made under Motor Vehicles Act, okay? I am just noted this down. This is an over, it's an open loop. I have to clarify this, what is over dimensional cargo, which I will do it later. I am not going to do the research now. I will do it later. Extension of validity period. If validity of the E-way bill expires, the goods are not supposed to be moved. In general, the validity of the E-way bill cannot be extended. However, the validity of the E-way bill can be extended in the following cases. So generally, the E-way bill has to be, once I generate an E-way bill, the transport should have been completed within the validity period. So you you don't get an extension to it in general, but that is an exception, let us see. If the extension is by the commissioner for certain categories of goods. Commissioner may, on the recommendations of the council, by notification, extend the validity of validity period of an E-way bill. For certain categories of goods as may be specified therein. So if commissioner of this indirect access, if he or she thinks. Then on recommendations of councils by notification, extend the validity period of an E-way bill for certain categories of goods, okay? And then the second situation is, under circumstances of exceptional nature, the extension can be done by the transporter. In exceptional situations like including transshipment, the goods cannot cannot be transported within the validity period of the E-way bill. The transporter may extend the validity period after updating the details in part B if required. Thus, the transporter who is carrying the consignment as per the E-way bill system at the time of expiry of validity period. Can extend the validity period, such transporter can extend the validity of the E-way bill. If the consignment is not being reached, the destination within the validity period due to exceptional circumstances like natural calamity. Law and order issues, transshipment delay, the accident of conveyance. He needs to explain this reason in details while extending the validity period. So looks like he has to update certain things in part B, by by that he has to. Uh in part B, I think he has to give the reasons, I think. The validity of the E-way bill may be extended within eight hours from the time of its expiry, okay? Extended within eight hours. So extension, I can claim within eight hours from the expiry of the E-way bill. Okay, what is acceptance? The details of the E-way bill generated shall be made available to the supplier if registered. If reg- supplier if registered where the information in party has been furnished by the recipient or transporter. Or it is available to the recipient if registered where the party, where the information is in party has been furnished by the supplier or. Transporter on the common portal and the supplier or recipient as the case may be. Shall communicate his acceptance or rejection of the consignment covered by the E-way bill rule one thirty eight eleven. Again, it has been written in a a little complicated language. I understand it in a simple way. Let's say I am the supplier. If I have generated party and there will be another recipient of the goods at the other end. Anyway, I am doing it in the common portal, so that person can access the same E-way bill, so he can give acceptance to the party that I furnished. Let's say I am I am the recipient and the party has been filled by the supplier at the other end. And I am the recipient, I will have the access to the same common portal, I can access the E-way bill. And I can give my concurrence or acceptance or rejection to the same which has been done by the uh the other person who is the supplier in this case. Okay, moving on. In case, the person to whom the information in part A is made available. Does not communicate his acceptance or rejection within the specified time, it shall be deemed that he has accepted the details. So there is a time limit to it by by when the other person should give their acceptance or rejection. The time limit for specified purposes, seventy two hours of the details being made available to him on the common portal or. Time of delivery of goods, either within seventy two hours of file filling the part A. The other person should have communicated the acceptance or rejection or before the delivery of goods, whichever is earlier, rule one thirty eight twelve. Okay, if the other person has not communicated. An open communication like acceptance or rejection, then it is deemed that the other person has accepted it. So we have heard of a rule, isn't it, silence amounts to acceptance. So in this case here, it will be silence will amount to acceptance. Provided, the seventy two hours has crossed since furnishing of part A or delivery of goods, whichever is earlier. Okay, twelfth point. E-way bill generated in one state is valid in another state. The E-way bill generated under this rule or under rule one thirty eight of the G S T rules. Of any state or union territory shall be valid in every state and union territory, one thirty eight sub rule thirteen. Now, let's see the points to remember. E-way bill is not valid for movement of goods without vehicle number on it, okay? If there is a mistake, incorrect or wrong entry in the E-way bill, then it cannot be edited or corrected. Only option is cancellation of E-way bill within twenty four hours of generation and generate a new one with correct details. Yeah, again we saw, there is no edit option in E-way bill. E-way bill may be updated with vehicle number, any number of times, okay? The latest vehicle number should be available on E-way bill and should match with the vehicle carrying it in case checked by the department. Okay, so always the the where the goods are being traveled and where which vehicle is being checked by the department. That even bill should carry that vehicles number where the checking is being uh carried upon by the department. Okay, fifth point, if multiple invoices are issued by the supplier to recipient, that is. For movement of goods of more than one invoice of same consignor and consignee, multiple E-way bills have to be generated. That is, for each invoice, one E-way bill has to be generated. Irrespective of the fact whether same or different consignors or consignees are involved. Multiple invoices cannot be clubbed to generate one E-way bill, okay? This is another important point, you can highlight this. So if I am sending in one consignment, let's say goods for ten invoices, I am clubbing all that and sending in one truck. But ten invoices worth of goods are being transported, then I have to also generate ten E-way bills. Every invoice should have and separate E-way bill, so you cannot club the invoices and prepare one single E-way bill. So create separate E-way bills and then you can make a consolidated E-way bill on E W B zero two which we saw. So that's what given here. After generating all these E-way bills, one consolidated E-way bill can be prepared for transportation purpose. If goods are going in one vehicle, right? So, this is where we had studied till yesterday. Now let us start with the today's quota. So from now till the end of the chapter, we are going to cover it in today's lecture itself. Let us begin. Topic number thirteen, situations where E-way bill is not required to be generated. Notwithstanding anything explained above, so regardless of whatever said above. No E-way bill is required to be generated in the following cases. Let's see what are they? Where the goods are being, goods being transported are the ones given below, liquefied petroleum gas. For supply to household and non-domestic exempted category customers, okay? Carosin oil and sold under P D S, okay? What is P D S? We have to see. Next, postal baggage transported by Department of Posts, okay? Natural or cultured pearls and precious or semi-precious stones. Precious metals and metals clad with precious metal, chapter seventy one, okay? Jewelry, goldsmiths and silver smiths wares and other articles, excepting imitation jewelry, okay? Currency, used personal and household effects, coral unworked and worked coral, okay? Okay, so these are the items given in a list, so we don't have to carry E-way bill for that. Now let's see, the list is still going on, let us see. Where the goods are being transported by a non-motorized conveyance, non-motorized conveyance, let's say bullock cart, horse cart. Non-motorized con- conveyance. Okay, where the goods are being transported from customs port, airport, air cargo complex. And a land customs station to an inland container depot or a container freight freight station for clearance by customs. Okay, whatever the goods that you, that get landed in the port and from port or airport. It goes to a docking station, isn't it, to a customer, I mean to a customs area, isn't it? So that, for that movement, I don't think you need E-way bill. In respect of movement of goods within such areas as are notified under rule of one thirty eight. Sub rule fourteen, sub rule D of the state or union territory, G S T rules in that particular state or union territory. Okay, something that is notified as uh in respect of such areas, okay? Some, looks like there are some areas that is kind of immune to this E-way bill rule. So if you move within that area, I think you don't need to create E-way bill. Okay, next point. Where the goods other than de-oiled cake being transported are exempt from tax, okay? Where goods are being transported, okay, of of course we saw this previously, if the goods are, if the supply itself is exempt, you don't need to carry. E-way bill, but other than that, there is still an exception to an exception which is de-oiled cake. So if you carry de-oiled cake, I don't know whether de-oiled cake is subject to G S T or not. But if you carry de-oiled cake, I think, I don't think this exception immunity applies to you, you still have to carry E-way bill to it, okay? Point F, where the goods being transported are alcoholic liquor for human consumption, petroleum crude. High-speed diesel, motor spirit commonly known as petrol, natural gas and aviation turbine fuel, okay? Where the supply of goods being transported is treated as no supply under schedule three of the C G S T act, okay? Where the goods are being transported under customs bond from an inland container depot. Or a container freight station to a customs port, airport, air cargo complex, land customs station. Or from one custom station or custom sport to another custom station or custom sport. So, this is like a reverse of what we saw here. Here, here the goods are being transported from port to a custom station, container freight station. Here it is given that from container station to a custom sport, so both ways, they are excluding, they are exempting it. And where the goods are being transported are under customs supervision or under customs seal, okay? Fine, where the goods being transported are uh or transit cargo from or to Nepal or Bhutan, okay? These two countries are specifically covered here because if you see uh for Bhutan and Nepal. Larger amount of their lifestyle goods, regular goods like provisions, rice or whatever it is, sugar, many things. Uh, gas, many things. These are uh, they are, they largely dependent, they are largely dependent on the Indian supply, okay? So, okay, so that way it is exempted, fine. Where the goods being transported are exempt from tax under notification seven of two thousand seventeen. Supply of goods by the C S D to the unit-run canteens. Or to the authorized customers and supply of goods by the unit-run canteens to the authorized customers and notification twenty six of two thousand seventeen. Supply of heavy water and nuclear fuels by Department of Atomic Energy to Nuclear Power Corporation of India Limited, okay, fine. Specific notification related exceptions. Any movement of goods caused by defense formation under Ministry of Defense as a consignor or consignee, okay? Where the consignor of goods is the central government, government of any state or a local authority for transport of goods. By rail, okay? Where empty cargo containers are being transported, okay? Where the goods are being transported up to a distance of twenty kilometers from the place of the business of the consignor. To a way bridge, okay, for wayment or from the way bridge back to the place of business of the said consignor. Subject to the condition that the movement of goods is accompanied by a delivery chalan issued in accordance with rule number twenty five. So there should be some document, only you are exempt from E-way bill, but still there has to be a delivery chalana. You can't send uh just like that, empty-handed, can't move goods just like that, okay? Where empty cylinders for packing of liquefied petroleum gas are being moved for reasons other than supply. Empty cylinders, okay? Fourteenth point, documents and devices are to be carried by a person, by a person in charge of a conveyance. Okay, one thirty eight A. The person in charge of a conveyance shall carry the invoice or bill of supply or delivery chalan as the case may be. And the, and a copy of the E-way bill in physical form or the E-way bill number in electronic form. Or mapped to a R F I D embedded onto the conveyance. Except in case of movement of goods by rail or by air or by or by vessel in such a manner as may be notified by the commissioner, okay? Carrying E-way bill number in electronic form implies that person in charge of conveyance. Can merely code the E-way bill number to the proper tax officer. Tax officer will do all the requisite verifications based on that number, okay? R F I Ds are radio frequency identification devices uh used for identification, okay? Invoice reference number instead of tax invoice. In case E invoice is issued, the quick response code for Q R code having an embedded invoice reference number in it. May be produced electronically for verification by the proper officer instead of the physical copy of such tax invoice, okay? In such a case, the registered person will not have to upload the information in part A of E-way bill. For generation of E-way bill and the same shall be autopopulated by the common portal on the basis of information furnished in the prescribed form relating to E invoice. Okay, the commissioner may by notification require a class of transporters to obtain a unique R F I D, radio frequency identification device. And get the said device embedded onto the conveyance and map the E-way bill to the R F I D prior to the movement of goods. Documents instead of E-way bill, where circumstances so warrant. Commissioner may by notification require the person in charge of the conveyance to carry the following documents instead of the E-way bill. Tax invoice or bill of supply or bill of entry and or a delivery chalan where the goods are transported for reasons other than by way of supply. Okay, so it looks pretty simple only, uh this fourteenth subtopic is all about. What are the documents that we are supposed to carry? So basically it talks about invoice, bill of supply or delivery chalan and then a copy of E-way bill in physical form. Or you should know the E-way bill number in electronic form or mapped to a R F I D. I want to know what is this R F I D, uh how, what do they mean by it? So again, two things are now there, over dimensional cargo we have to check and the second one is R F I D. See, I can understand this GPS device attached to a vehicle, so let's say you track taxis. Um based on Ola Uber through GPS, but what is this R F I D, I am not able to understand. Embedded onto the conveyance in such a manner as may be notified by the commissioner, so how does it work? How does a lorry driver carrying something like R F I D and how would be, they be, I mean the authorities, how will they be able to check? No idea, okay, we have to see that. Now invoice number instead of tax invoice, either Q R code again, sometimes E invoice is issued, you just need a Q R code for that. From there they can populate the invoice number electronically, this is also okay. Okay, in such a situation, based on the tax invoice being an E invoice, while uh generating the E-way bill. The part A of E-way bill can be directly populated from the tax invoice itself, so auto-populated, okay? That that kind of saves the time for the consignor or the consignee who is generating the party. Okay, let's go to the next point, verification of documents and conveyances, one thirty eight B. The commissioner or an officer empowered by him in this behalf may authorize the proper officer to intercept any. Conveyance to verify, to intercept any conveyance to verify the E-way bill in physical or electronic form. For all interstate or intrastate movement of goods. So, checkpoint concept only has been abolished, but still suddenly any vehicle can be intercepted by the proper officer. To have the goods checked, fine. The commissioner shall get R F I D readers installed at places. Where the verification of movement of goods is required to be carried out. And verification of movement of vehicles shall be done through such device readers. Where the E-way bill has been mapped with the said device. Okay, the physical verification of conveyances shall be carried out by the proper officer. As authorized by the commissioner or an officer empowered by him in this behalf. Okay, however, on receipt of a specific information on aviation of tax, physical verification of a specific conveyance can also be carried out. So not just the verification of E-way bill, they may also raid your vehicle basically. Of a specific can, conveyance can also be carried out by any other officer after obtaining necessary approval of the commissioner. Or an officer authorizing him in this behalf, okay? Inspection and verification of goods, one thirty eight C. So one thirty eight B is verification of documents and conveyance. Next one is verification of goods. A summary report of every inspection of goods in transit shall be recorded online by the proper officer. In part A of a prescribed form within twenty four hours of inspection. And the final report in part B of said form shall be recorded within three days of such inspection. However, where the circumstances so warrant, the commissioner or any other officer authorized by him may. On sufficient cause being shown, extend the time for recording of the final report in part B of said form. For a period, for a further period not exceeding three days, okay? The period of twenty four hours or as the case may be, three days shall be counted from the midnight of the date on which. The vehicle was intercepted, okay? Whether, where the physical verification of goods being transported on any conveyance has been done during transit at one place. Within the state or union territory or in any other state or union territory, no further physical verification of the said conveyance. Shall be carried out again in the state or union territory unless a specific information relating to aviation after. Tax is made available subsequently, okay, fine. Seventeenth point, facility for uploading information regarding detention of vehicle, one thirty eight D. Where a vehicle has been intercepted and detained for a period exceeding thirty minutes. The transporter may upload the said information in specific form on the common portal, okay? So the people who have sent the goods and the people who are expecting the goods, they will know the live, uh you know, they will know the live information, okay? Eighteenth point, blocking of E-way bill generation facility, one thirty eight E. Blocking of E-way bill generation facility means disabling a taxpayer. Blocking of E-way bill generation facility means disabling a taxpayer from generating the E-way bill. Blocking of GST again for E-way bill generation would only be available, would only be for the defaulting supplier GST I N. And not for the defaulting recipient or transporter GST I N. Suspended GST I N cannot generate E-way bill as supplier, however, the suspended GST I N can get the. E-way bill generated as recipient or as transporter, okay. As per one thirty-eight E rule, no person including a consignor, consignee, transporter. An e-commerce operator or a courier agency shall be allowed to furnish the information in part A of form G S T E W B zero one in any. In respect of any outward movement of goods of a registered person who, being a person paying tax under composition scheme. Has not furnished the statement for payment of assessed self, of the self-assessed tax for two consecutive quarters. Okay, being a person paying tax under regular scheme has not furnished the returns for a consecutive period of two tax periods. Okay, being a person paying tax under regular scheme has not furnished G S T R one, a statement of outward supplies. For any two months or quarters as the case may be, being a person whose registration has been suspended under provisions of rule. Twenty-one A of the CGST rules, okay, there is a lot of other connecting provisions, so they are connecting something of this composition scheme. So we have to know what is composition scheme, who gets covered under composition scheme and then. What is G S T R one, how often a person has to file G S T R, so I think in the returns chapter we will be able to know. Because there will be different different filing due dates for different type of suppliers. Okay, fine then, let's do this last paragraph, however. Commissioner or jurisdictional commissioner may, on receipt of an application from a registered person in prescribed form on sufficient cause being shown. And for reasons to be recorded in writing by order, in prescribed form, allow furnishing of the said information in part A of. Yes, G S T E W B zero one, subject to prescribed conditions and restrictions, okay, so. Generally, you are prohibited from doing all these things if you have violated the provisions here. But still commissioner can give you some excuse, provided you have shown some sufficient reasons. In recorded, to be recorded in writing, then you will still be able to file your E-way bill uh that way for part of E-way bill. An order rejecting said request shall not be passed without giving the said person a reasonable opportunity of being heard, okay. The permission granted or rejected by the commissioner of state tax or commissioner of union territory tax. Shall be deemed to be granted or uh as the case may be rejected by the commissioner, okay, nineteenth point. It may be noted that the expressions transported by railways, transportation of goods by railways. Transport of goods by rail and movement of goods by rail used in the provisions discussed above does not include cases. Where leasing of parcel space by railways takes place, okay. Fine, Mister A, a registered person paying tax under regular scheme in Delhi has not filed the form G S T R one for the last two months. Mister B, Haryana, regular return filer wants to generate an E-way bill for goods to be supplied to Mister A. So in this case Mister B is the supplier, so here they are saying, isn't it, only the, the suspended GST I N. Applies to a person who is sending the goods, they won't be able to generate the E W B zero one as a supplier. But they can actually receive goods, so here Mister B is only sending and he is a regular return filer, so he won't be affected by this. One thirty-eight E, and therefore A is the registered person, is there going to receive the goods only, so in that case, I think. There would not, there should not be any problem, anyway, let's see what is there, huh, here, there will be no restriction in generating E-way bill for Mister B. Who is making the outward movement of goods as he is a regular return filer, Mister A wants to generate an E-way bill in respect of outward supply of. Goods to Mister H, here in this situation, E-way bill generation is blocked in this case as it is an outward supply, outward movement of goods. Because he has not filed return for the past two months, now this is, okay, makes sense. Tax invoice or bill of supply to accompany transport of goods, rule fifty-five A. Person in charge of the conveyance shall carry a copy of the tax invoice or the bill of supply issued. In accordance with the provisions of rule forty-six forty-six A forty-nine. In a case where such person is not required to carry an E-way bill under these rules. Okay, so we have completed this chapter successfully, it took us four study sessions and we have also studied like. Two rounds until page number twenty also, so by tomorrow we would have completed this chapter, two rounds entirely. So this, let us recapitulate section, I am not going to read because anyway we are going to do five rounds of revision, so I am not going to read this. Here again, test your knowledge, we will probably attempt this after we complete. Three or four rounds depending on our schedule, we have to study the other chapters also. Okay, so yeah, these are all the new things that I am seeing in study material, when, back when I studied, we never have this rapid fire crossword. First of all, we never used to have this much color things in the study material itself, nice to see anyway. I definitely keep this test your knowledge thing in mind, maybe after round three or round four, we will attempt to uh do the questions. So I will tell you the plan for tomorrow, so let me update today, we have done round two of. This, just sixth October, it is done, tomorrow the color will become green and we have completed round one of. This page, so once I apply this formula, it will be here. So tomorrow we will do round two, by that, E-way bill chapter entirely, two rounds would have been completed, then again on eighth. We will start with the round three, one Monday, we will do like five pages, six pages depending on our time. It will keep becoming due and we will keep revising, then we will have a break of three to four days, then again from fifteenth October, we will do round four. Meanwhile, we will also be taking up with new chapters. I am yet to decide what I am going to study tomorrow, most likely I will start with definition of supply. Most likely, I am not sure, anyway, so if you have stayed till here in this chapter. I thank you so much, I hope you had a productive session here with me, I hope studying along with me in this manner is. Proving useful to you, please let me know your thoughts, it's an experiment that I am carrying on, the system has slowly begun to work, you see, this is. Study session number four and now you must have got an idea of how the topics will become due every passing day. And based on this sheet, we will decide on what we are going to study at that particular day and then. Depending on the capacity, we will keep adding like new portions of five to six pages depending on the volume and complexity of the provisions that are there. Your thoughts on the comment section will be extremely useful, I will see you tomorrow, end of study session four, thank you and bye-bye.